I think you're live.
We are.
All right, welcome everyone. Today is. How can we forget what today is? Nine eleven. Twenty twenty three. Around the table, and this is a regular city council workshop. Around the table, we have Council Palateer, Cuts of Sprague, Council Schaefer, Council Hawes, Council Yakabaga, Council David, also Council Fornia. Also at the table was City Manager DeGlori. First up on the agenda is the Cross Insurance. Year in Review, and I see Chris in the audience. But I thought he might step forward and have a seat at the big boy table.
My name's Chris. I'm the General Manager of the Cross Insurance Center.
I'm Doug Higginson, Senior Vice President with Oakview Group. Just by way of history, and we're just talking to Sue. Been involved with the facility for ten years. We're excited about the tenth anniversary of the building. We'll talk a little bit more about that. But really, it's just from from a company standpoint, and a personal standpoint. Yeah, I remember being here for the groundbreaking. And it's just real, we're really proud of what the building's become for both the community and for the industry. It really is. It's an important account for our company. It's an important account for me personally, and I'm again proud of the success we've had. Proud of the fact that we've been able to say Chris has started in group sales and just grown over the ten years of the building to be the general manager. So come over to Chris, go through the the last fiscal year and then talk about the fair and the future.
And I will add that this used to be a regular staple feature where we did an annual review and it kind of. The pandemic waylaid a whole bunch of things, but with Chris back, we're back to do it. And we have an electronic version, and we'll make sure that it's added to the website.
So we're going to start here on page seven. We'll jump right into some of the facility improvements that we've done over the course of the last year. So right here, we. We've kind of jumped back into, you know, the. Some folks know the HVAC system control upgrade that we did through capital funding. We've done some boiler maintenance and repairs. Third floor improvements was a big push for us this past fiscal year. Mainly due to the demand for suites and we, as everybody knows, we had thirteen suites prior to our remodel and rethinking and improvements, and now we have sixteen. We'll talk about that a little bit deeper, but fifteen out of sixteen are currently under contract. As of the end of this fiscal year, so it was one of those efforts to provide more of a premium space for our customers. Based off of the demand, some additional improvements, painting in certain areas that are a focal point for us, convention center space, not new colors, just a refresh of the current space to give that new clean feel. Safety equipment upgrades and stanchions, other improvements for the facility to really help us drive our our events and be successful as a whole. Next page, we'll we'll go into, you know, our our team is phenomenal, and we have twenty current full time positions. I can't speak. You know, any higher of our team, they're phenomenal. They're the the reason why our events really take place and, you know, from. Everybody, every department, it really acts as a as a mechanism for success and. This is based off of our current, you know, last fiscal year, our, you know, full transparency, our our team has shifted. It's changed a little bit as of just two months into this fiscal year, we've seen kind of a reorg already. But it's all for the better good of of the the event center and taking care of our events and more focus on certain areas where we can see growth. Arena events. We, over the past year, we've hosted a variety of of arena ticketed events. Several sold out shows from Burt Kreischer, Professional Bull Riders, Greta Van Fleet, Parker McCollum. And all this goes on. A lot of this success comes from our O V G Live Nation relationships. Promoter relationships in general are profiting because of O V G and the connections. Burt Kreischer is one example here where it's a sold out show. He's never been in the market, and the promoter that brought us that show had never been in our building ten years and and has never been in our building. So this is all a success for us. It's based off of our relationships that were were growing because of our affiliation with O V G. This year, our our strongest P B R year to date, eleven thousand plus paid tickets, six hundred and eight thousand gross revenue plus the ancillary revenues that come from it. Shows that this event still six years later is doing better and better and better as it comes, and we have. Silently announced it, they announced their entire tour, so the show will be returning in the in March of twenty twenty four. So it'll be returning. It's one of the two events on the Velocity Tour that acts as a three day weekend, which speaks volumes to our market and to the success that we continue to see from this event. We've had theatrical shows, family shows, Shrine Circus continues to come back and continues to be successful. Comedy shows, concerts, and, you know, the beauty of this space that gives us the ability to offer a ride, a wide range of of events that our folks and our patrons can enjoy. At the bottom here, and we'll touch a little bit on it in a in a presentation after this, but the Bangor State Fair in fiscal year twenty three is still growing, and we saw fifteen thousand plus folks. In a four day span, we had great weather all four days of this year. Unfortunately, I can't say the same for the one that we had last month. But we we're still seeing success with that, and we're this fiscal year, we brought back the truck pulls and demolition derby. We brought a smaller tractor pull event back, and it helps drive our attendance. Main Harvest Festival continues to be one of the the popular events that we have, community driven events, and it continues to come back year after year. Jumping into Convention Center. This space, we saw fifty more events than we had in twenty twenty two. So seventy five total events with one point two million dollars in gross revenue. Some of our notable notable events, the Governor's opioid conference, we saw the return of the Bangor Region Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Dinner, Main Asphalt Association, the Olympia Snow Women's Leadership, and this goes on, Main Municipal Association, corporate holiday parties. This is a space that we're continuing to grow post pandemic. We're continuing to see it come back from the pandemic. We welcome thirty new events that had never been in the facility before. And we're excited for the future here.
Just to take off on that, just it's interesting having two different distinct different facilities on the one roof, the arena. That business post pandemic came back almost immediately. We like that to the roaring twenties, and everyone was pent up indoors for for so long, they wanted to get out and see live events. So what we saw as an industry is concerts and family shows and tour events came back, and people are buying tickets now more than ever for all events. Convention and meeting business is taking years to build back from the pandemic because people are doing virtual meetings still, and so we're starting to place that. So the fact that we've been able to grow from the previous fiscal year, fifty plus events last fiscal year, and I keep going this year, that really shows that we're on the right trajectory again.
And from a ticketing partner standpoint. Ticketmaster is our verified partner. Any ticketed event that happens at the facility, we'll go through Ticketmaster. We have a favorable ticketing deal with Ticketmaster based off of, once again, our our O V G corporate relationship. We sold one hundred and fifty two thousand plus tickets up from up twenty three point two percent. And FY twenty two, so we're seeing growth there, five point two million dollars in gross ticket revenue, up forty two percent from the previous fiscal year. We're starting to see a rise again in our group sales. We're starting to see a rise again in our pre show packaging, things that you do prior to the show, pre show dinners, cocktail hours, we're utilizing new spaces in the facility. We're starting to do things on the third floor with dinners prior to a show, Cirque du Soleil, Ortega. We're starting to to really drive this business again because it gives folks something to do prior to the event, additional revenue. But also getting people in the facility quicker. They're in the parking lots quicker. It's alleviating a lot of that pressure that we're seeing. Our top three group events, Professional Bull Riders, the Bangor State Fair, and Cirque du Soleil. So P B R is one of our long running group events. It's ten or more. Generally, you're seeing discounts here, so this is a way for us to generate ancillary revenue, really drive clumpings of tickets. And the more events we add, the more family show events, we'll start to see this this number continue to climb. From food service and hospitality, this is arguably one of the most impressive things that we've had over this past fiscal year. We saw a fifty percent increase in our gross food and beverage revenue. Largely because of our increase in events, but we're seeing things, you know, our our ancillary food and beverage numbers increased because of our cashless operation, and if everybody remembers, we presented a year ago around this time about going cashless, and that was one of our big corporate initiatives with O V G, and we're seeing a lot of our other venues have success with it. It allows us to push people through lines quicker. It allows us to to get more in our patrons' hands. They're getting more excited. They're going to the event. They're not frustrated. And our food and beverage world, from a catering standpoint, the convention dinner space, we have a food and beverage manager that's pushing upsells. They're driving our business with creative menus instead of the old standard.
Chicken.
Chicken. So it's it's really allowing us to grow as a whole, and we're seeing it here, fifty percent increase in our gross food and beverage and a three hundred and fifty three thousand dollar increase in concession specific revenue that's our arena ticketed business between the two fiscal years. One of our event highlights here is the Fourth Annual Main Opioid Response Summit. Mainly because it was our, one of our very first events in the fiscal year, but also because we did eleven hundred plus people and a food buffet in less than thirty minutes. And if anybody's gone to one of those major events, there's always worry that what if we run out of food or what if, you know, the next session starts? We had, I think, eight different buffet stations with lines coming every which way, and it was a true testament to the the food and beverage team and how they were able to accomplish that. So we're excited about that. The next bit, tenant partners, University of Maine basketball still continues to play some of their home games at the facility. N P A tournament. You know, this is an event that every year, February, town shut down, and they'll come to the facility and Central Maine and Augusta and Portland as well, but for us, it's it's a incredible eight days. We saw almost forty thousand people come through the facility, and the last bit here, we saw John Bass play their entire home game season at our facility, and we worked with them creatively to provide a a decent rate, but also balancing their games between times we had the basketball court down for things like Harlem Globetrotters or human basketball. So. And I believe also they're playing their entire season at the cross center this year as well. This portion right here, the corporate partnerships, so out of all O V G managed properties, we were the highest percentage to goal variance. So we build one point two million dollars in fiscal year twenty three, we saw fifteen new partnerships. Many of you know, Millby Anderson is one of our biggest partners at this point with their name on the door, and they have their lower level suite. Hammond Lumber is also coming in as a naming rights partner to the former Southeast Entrance right across from Residence Inn. So total in those fifteen new partnerships, it was close to a million dollars in total value. Again, we've secured contracts for fifteen out of the sixteen suites that we have. We're hopeful for Suite sixteen here shortly. And we'll be full and looking for other ways we can create premium space.
Sweet sixteen was almost funny.
And the last bit here, we renamed the primary convention center entrance as the Woodrow Cross Entrance. We do have still to this day, the Friends of the C I C Advisory Board. This this advisory board, we need on a monthly basis, and it's a group of local citizens that are committed to the ongoing success of our facility and currently Julia Monsey is the Chair and Dr. Lee Spironis from Houston University is the Vice Chair. And great relationships with both of them, and they're continuing the support and how we can grow from a community standpoint and also an event standpoint. And the last bit here, the financial performance. So, you know, we we saw one hundred and seventy four events and you know, we beat budget. Hundred and forty nine thousand, we beat budget by a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we saw an increase in ancillary revenue as we discussed, food and beverage, some of our ticketing fees and that sort of stuff. We saw dips in other things, but you know, as we work through still the the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic, we're trying to drive these events into a more realistic approach, so. Yeah. And then the last bit, so, you know, as we look to the future, you know, our our goal is community focused, and how can we be a better facility for our community and the community partners, our founding partners, our sponsors. We had yesterday a ten year anniversary open house, where we saw about a hundred and fifty, two hundred people come through the building, utilize the space, see the space, some for the first time. Today, we hosted a ten year anniversary celebratory golf tournament where the charitable component to a charitable organization from Bangor Police Department and the Bangor Fire Department. And as we, you know, get deeper into this fiscal year, we're really pushing ten year anniversary celebration, so all of our events becoming part of the celebration, all of our events being highlighted by the fact that we've been open now for ten years with a stamp winter or spring with a major ten year anniversary show. So one of the big focuses for our corporate partners and, you know, Doug and his team is really helping us solidify those events and making the facility really shine in this ten year anniversary moment.
That's very good. Yes, good. Any questions?
Questions for Chris or Doug?
Chris, it's all really positive in terms of changes that are occurring. I think you've been doing a great job, I'm gonna bring it all this about, so I hear it's positive. Thanks. So thank you for all that, and it's a good partnership that we have. And I was really good until I got to the financial performance page. But this seems to indicate that we're you know, if if this is end of the year numbers, right? That we're experiencing over a hundred thousand dollars brought in our operating margin to the year from actual. Am I reading?
No.
It was a positive variant.
Positive variant, thirty eight thousand dollars.
Positive variants is a hundred and ten.
So we've got a hundred and forty nine thousand dollars in net income for operating. Okay, thank you. And then just one quick question. We have on one page, on page fourteen, this is just a minor thing, but we have basketball revenue, we have fourteen thousand dollars in ticket sales and sixteen thousand tickets. Yeah, so our tickets are less than a dollar a piece in terms of.
Though that ticket is all tickets issued, so they do a lot of student comps, they do a lot of their foundation comps, all that stuff, so and University of Maine actually does their their own pricing, so they'll push out group pricing, they'll push out their season pricing, all of that stuff, so that really encompasses all of their tickets, their total tickets issued instead of the paid tickets.
Okay.
Because they also go based off of their tickets issued. So all of that ticketing money is actually there, so part of the agreement, we keep the facility fee. They pay a rent for the facility, they pay reimbursable expenses, and then food and beverage revenue.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, I had similar comments to Congressman Spag. I think this is a very impressive report. You talked about the increase in food and beverage, and it doesn't happen by accident. It's from the top down down there. I was at an event within last year, and it was very busy. The bar was open in the lobby area, but the main hall wasn't open yet. It was people waiting quite a while, and Chris, you came out, you opened up the hall, you opened the bars inside so people could get in, people get serviced, and you were there, you saw what was going on, you reacted to it. So this is different than we've had in the experience in the past. It's great to see that going on. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let's get one more. In in terms of how we're looking at customer service, and I know that's not that you're working hard on. Yeah, and that's one of the the lower ratings of the, you know, the stars, so to speak, at four point two. Can you differentiate it all from what you've done? How much of that is related to ticketing with Ticketmaster versus the other services that people receive and serve within the facility?
Yeah, so ticketing fees are, you know, something that sometimes we control, sometimes we don't. What we can control is our ability to sell tickets in person, right? And now that we're through the summer kind of slow period, now that we have events on sale, we're starting to see more box office days and more phone call days to give customers the ability skip the fees, skip all that stuff, call us direct, come in person. A lot of folks still like to see their hard ticket as well. But really, our our goal is listening to the customers. What do they want? A lot of them will buy online, and we'll still hear about all these fees, all these fees, but they want the the event tickets now, right? They don't want to run the risk of missing out on seeing somebody like Elton John or Motley Crue or Professional Bull Rider, Burt Kreischer for that matter, right? So but one of the things that we're doing is we're providing more ways for them to get their tickets. And same with things like a food and beverage approach with the quicker lines and the third floor with allowing folks to go down or come up if they want to, you know, get a different beverage or if they want to skip lines and do all that stuff, and we're seeing V I P lines and having a, all the way to the right, our third floor. Folks are allowed to go in on a arena show, they're allowed to go in the right hand side, but also folks can buy Fastpass lands, or they can get V I P treatment if they buy the artist V I P package for that event. So we're really trying to provide a an atmosphere for people to get what they want. One of the, one of the things that pushes that down is our ability to get folks into parking. We're trying different ways, utilizing different entrances to get folks into the parking lots quicker, so they can get into the building quicker. But one of the issues we're running into is folks getting there five minutes before the show starts, and then they're waiting in traffic from Main Street. And how can we fix that? That's, you know, we'll continue pushing and and trying to figure out how we can get folks in and out, but that's really one of the one of the deciding factors of that customer service.
So four point six next year.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Anything else? If not, it's fine, say.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, I'll get out of this.
Cody should be able to. Yeah.
We'll just go from this screen here. Okay, so the Bangor State Fair, so this is a recap and future recommendations. And one of the reasons why we're doing this is we had a meeting with you folks.
Last November.
Yeah, Novemberish, and we talked about our thoughts for this coming year. That has come and gone, and now we are going to recap it. Some pain points that we have, and then some recommendations for the future and how we can grow this thing. So historical data, we'll start here, pre pandemic numbers, so we we use the the previous three years prior to the pandemic and then comparing it to post pandemic, the three years out of pandemic and and if you look at this, I mean, it really speaks for itself going from ten days to four, we're seeing the ability.
I think you need to stop sharing. Right, I think you could bring it up, so you need to stop share.
Me?
Yes, yeah, you can, and then go back down to share. And now grab the fair one. It didn't know that you had changed.
Okay. Okay, we'll continue. So we got pre pandemic versus post pandemic, so since the pandemic lifted, we've gone full scheduled days of affairs. Some of those days have been rained out, unfortunately. But we're seeing a growth in our attendance. We go from twenty twenty one to twelve thousand people up to this past year, sixteen thousand people. We've adjusted how we do the rides, and we're seeing a growth in our revenue from this year. This past year, we had these four days. So first day, truck pulls. We had great attendance based off of historical data. We also had a great day weather wise. Day two, not so much. We had the Jameson Rogers concert in the grandstand. We ended up doing about thirteen hundred people, but we were fighting weather all day, and that became a challenge ultimately when it was our more expensive day from an entertainment standpoint and a more it was a higher price gate admission, and, you know, we obviously needed to collect that revenue to adjust for the expense. Day three, we saw the demolition derby return, always a fan favorite. Sixty two hundred folks and higher than any day previous year. We also had decent weather, not the greatest. Day four, paid admission, forty seven hundred. This was tractor pull day. We also, I believe, saw makeup from day two. Previous year, we did eighteen hundred people on this Sunday. Right here is a little bit of a breakdown on where we're seeing some revenue versus where we're seeing some expenses. Ultimately, we had between gate, rides, food and beverage, rent, all of our ancillary revenue, we saw about four hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue between all of our expenses, collective expenses, including what we paid the the midway folks for revenue shares, three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. So midway, this is the update here, kind of the the ugly. They promised us twenty two rides, the Smokies Greater Shows. We saw nineteen, and out of those nineteen, seven or eight of them were the little little kid rides, certainly not going to drive for adults for that matter, lack quality and quantity. Our patrons ask for certain rides, right, and we're constantly saying, yep, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna have this. Here's the list of rides that they're saying that they are likely bringing, and then they don't. That becomes an issue, right? We're trying to resolve that. And most importantly, some of the more popular rides, just like every year, and, you know, unfortunately, we can't prevent this, but required maintenance throughout the weekend. Thankfully, they were able to get the rides back up and going unlike prior years. It's certainly never a good thing when one of the more popular adult rides out of the small selection that they're bringing is broken for the entire weekend, and folks are demanding refunds. Food vendors, same idea, so there's various fan favorites, Stove Boys, French Fries, I'm an Aid. But some issues here, most of the food vendors do not accept credit cards, and the midway provider also did not bring an ATM for folks to use, so folks were constantly going to the building ATMs. And when that many people are going to use the building ATMs, they then run out of money. And during the weekend, they certainly aren't going to come and fill them up, so that's one of the focuses for us, lack variety of foods. And then some of the stands were too close to each other, causing the lines to bottleneck, causing confusion on where people are supposed to go and how the midway is designed. Independent midway, so local live music, we had. Independent midway, um, so local live music, we had our in-house entertainment tent. We hosted six local bands, um. Midway Entertainment in terms of attractions, Party Paluga, Silver Circus, Showtime Steve, North Atlantic Wrestling, which was. Heavily attended and the antique car show on that following or the the final Sunday. This is an increase in what we did the previous year, but certainly not where we want to be. Independent vendors from the vendors we control, the vendors we book, um sponsors, advertisers. Um, fifteen vendors, three sponsor booths, four uh independent food trucks. And then we did some uh fan favorite food eating contests, um. Whoopi pies, hot dogs, hot wings, ice cream and blueberry pie. I think the same guy won like three out of the five. Agriculture, this one is a huge return for us, um. Working with some of our other O V G facilities, um one in particular in North Carolina. They have a uh similar building, similar footprint, um their fair is in a parking lot. They utilize their venue for agriculture and that's kind of where this idea came from. So out of the pandemic, it was always, how are we going to return agriculture? And um as many folks know, it at one point was, I believe, the second longest running agriculture fair. In the states. Behind, I think, Skowhegan and the idea was always, how do we get them back? And we spent countless days, countless hours trying to figure out, can we put them in tents? Can we use the paddock? Can we use? X, Y, or Z? Do we just figure out how to build new barns? Do we do this? Do we do that? And then we work with our O V G partners and. Landed on the arena and it was um. A lot of folks were confused at how it was going to work. Um, the consensus after the fact is that. It worked and they're looking forward to the future. A lot of folks um have been calling our livestock superintendent. Day in, day out, how can we get involved? How can we get there? What's it going to look like next year? So on, so forth. Um, we saw the return of beef and dairy cattle, goats, sheep and old McDonald's farm. The four H market option saw record pricing, which is important to note because now a lot of folks are looking to bring their animals to our fair. Right? So that's our growth. That's how we get from where we are this year to. Bigger attendance in the ag world, um using a wider footprint, using space in our convention center, not for animals, go for. You know, one-off shows, um. You know, that sort of stuff that, you know, we can use that ancillary space for meetings and, you know, all that good stuff. So. They saw approximately ninety three thousand dollars total in the market auction. Well, I think. So O V G support. So during this process, we worked with Doug, um the senior vice president and. Some of the other folks that have, um, you know, can either be considered fair experts or um. Run fairs at their individual properties. Uh, one of the big ones, Scott Shacklet. He's uh the manager of the LA County Fair and then Claudio, we worked with him a couple of different phone calls and Seth Benal. Um, general manager of Crown Complex, um which is the North Carolina fair that's very similar to our footprint and what we are looking to establish. One of the conversations we had with Seth very early on was taking ownership of your midway. Is the only way that your fair is going to become your fair and better again, right? So how can we grow it? It's. Taking ownership. If we continue to let it be what it is, it's. Going to remain, it's never going to get better. And we can say year in and year out that we want to grow, we want to be better, but until we do things like that. Until we have more oversight, until we hold our partners accountable for. Doing what they say they're going to provide, it's going to remain what it is. So. Our future recommendations, the goal is to strengthen the Bangor State Fair by reestablishing its importance to the greater Bangor community. Um, drive local engagement, capture a broader demographic through. Offering a larger variety of attractions and taking creative approaches to expanding our existing revenue streams such as our food and beverage world and having more oversight there. Midway, you know, ultimately, the goal is to partner with the mid midway providers. So. Many folks know that we used to have Fiesta Shows, Fiesta Shows prior to the pandemic was the midway provider. After the pandemic, they outsourced a lot of their stuff. To Smokies Greater Shows. This prior year, we worked exclusively with Smokies Greater Shows. Um, we have a meeting in two weeks with Maine Agriculture Fairs, Maine, yeah, that's. Um, and there's a a company that wants to get into the state of Maine from a midway standpoint. So. Um, they're looking at other state of Maine fairs and how they can get involved, how they can be present. Um, so our goal here is to take ownership of our midway. And it starts now, starts with this conversation. Independent midway, you know. We want to provide more additional attractions. We want to increase the number of independent vendors. We want to. Um, utilize our space more deliberately to encourage folks to go to the building um from the midway and and extend it. Create a bigger footprint, um utilize our parking lots. Lot A and Lot B instead of just Lot C for the midway, extend beyond the grandstands um to get people involved back there. So. Um, it's aggressive, but our goal is expansion. Our goal is a bigger footprint, provide more options, provide a better. Um, event for anybody that's interested in going to the fair. Grandstand entertainment, this is our big draw. Um, this past year, we had the truck pulls, we saw the return of tractor pulls. We had a country concert and we had a demolition derby. We want to do all of that and we want to do more monster trucks, motocross, more racing events. There's conversations that possibly doing some sort of um exhibition, horse racing prior to this, they're getting underway. Prior to any of the steel being on the track or the cars messing up the track or parking in the infield. So. Um, we're hopeful that those conversations continue to um expand and and we can make something like that happen. Other attractions, more local and regional live entertainment. Offering an additional acoustic soundstage, um. Community driven events, touch a truck, um or a similar style event. Um, how can we utilize things like the grandstand prior to a country concert going or prior to the demolition derby? So. Really thinking about it from a standpoint of usage instead of just letting it kind of sit and waiting for the next act to happen at the next night. So. One of the goals here is to, is to look at other fairs. Um, a few of us are going to go to Freiburg, a few of us are going to go to the Big E, a few of us are going to go to. Topsfield and really seeing how they utilize their space and what they have for attractions that are going on during um each individual day. Agriculture, um, the goal here is i- is just expansion. How can we be bigger than we were last year? Offering more commodities, offering more usage, expanding um some of the footprint to outdoors. Um, more demonstrations. Increase the number of existing, you know, uh exhibitors, um creating an opportunity for our folks to. To be involved. So um we want to bring a grain style um exhibit hall with vegetables, baked goods, that sort of stuff and really. Trying to get that. Included in the the overall footprint of what we have going on in the building. Obviously, everybody knows it's a huge space. So if we can use the space, we certainly want to. Food and beverage. Oversight, um right now, we're kind of out in the uh the cold when it comes to the actual. Food that's offered during the fair. We provide internally the food and beverage tent that's in-house. So. Um, what that means is we have no say on who comes. We have no say on how many options they have. If Smokies wants to have one doughboy stand, they're going to have one doughboy stand and then that creates um. The line issues and um people waiting in line for a doughboy for forty five minutes. So we want to have more oversight. We want to provide more options. Um, we want to. We want to highlight our uh ability to get creative with our internal food and beverage menus. Uh, we want to use social media to help sell that space. Um, more signage that points people not only to our food and beverage tents, but also additional offerings that we have, taste testings. Um, and our ability to add additional twenty one plus spaces for um adults to indulge. Growth and support. So how we're going to get here is subcommittees. Um, we want to create an opportunity for not only. Our uh venue staff to be involved and helping lead the directions of some of these areas like grandstand events and midway, local entertainment. But also the community. Um, we want to invite folks to be involved with the direction. What do they want to see? How do they want to see it happen? Um, we have several committees, uh subcommittees that we're hopeful for. Um, and I'm sure as we continue throughout the next year with planning, more will pop up. And our support comes with O O Q Group and Association of Agriculture Fairs and our C O C Advisory Board. And the last bit, so our goal is to have two weekends um in twenty twenty four. So. Reason number one is, um unfortunately, we can't predict the weather and. Having one of your four days completely rained out, which is one of your more important nights. Um, becomes a challenge from a financial standpoint. So our goal is to grow. Our goal is to have. Four days with midway and agriculture, starting on Thursday going through Sunday. Off Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday for resets of um staffing and our midway. Um, agriculture can certainly operate if they are so inclined. Um, and then opening back up from every standpoint on Thursday going through Saturday. Um, the goal is to be twelve to ten um later on weekends. And uh. You know, it's it's, at the end of the day, I mean, for us, you know, the ability for us to be successful. Um, comes with our ability to have multiple weekends, doing multiple demolition derbies, multiple concerts. Bringing back truck pulls, which was a drop, bringing back tractor pulls, which was a drop. So having the ability to have multiple weekends is important for our growth.
We're excited about the future of the fair. I I really, I think, um, i- i- we can get it back to a point that the entire community is proud to be. That it's a real fair. And I think over the years, it's become a fair that turned into a carnival. And then now I think that we've really got the the framework in place and the the building box in place to build us back to. Do to a true community Bangor State Fair.
Questions, comments, comments, trouble?
I think people are very happy to see the agriculture aspect back this year. We were creative and made that work. Um, and the report was great. I was actually shocked to see. When you looked at two seven, twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, how that it dropped before the pandemic and whatever, a ten day fair. Our revenue and attendance isn't for a four day fair, it isn't really that off from twenty nineteen. So. It was pretty amazing. And I think in the past, if we made fifty thousand dollars on the fair, we were very pleased with that. I think. This year, when we were at seventy thousand dollars, so that's very impressive for for a four day event. My question, my question is right, right here. If you've got anything set up. What's the uh advantage to not having the midway on those Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? You gotta get.
Yeah.
Why would you?
So historically, historically, on those um first few days of the week. We see very low attendance in general and staffing still exists, right? So. Um, our staffing expenses significantly outweigh the revenue.
Even if some run by me, it's Fiesta or.
Yeah, because we still have our internal staffing, but they also still have their, you know, their hourly or contracted workers that they have to pay. So. It allows them to reset those wages.
So right now, like Smokies does, uh they just control who the food vendors are. And who is Smokies still? Is that still the Bill Moore's?
Yeah, it's owned by Jeanette. Yeah, and then um E J Teen. The Dean's still on Fiesta. So he stepped out this past year. The only um. The only involvement that Fiesta Shows had with the Bangor State Fair this year is the ride key. Um, and that's one of the things that, full transparency, we don't want to go backwards with. Um, I think going back to the old steel booth with hard tickets is a mistake. So we need to stay. Um, in this century with technology and continuing to grow that aspect. And that's truthfully one of our concerns is. Whoever we go with, we need to be um mindful that they might not have that right key out. So we still may need to. Outsource to a Fiesta Shows, rent it from them or buy it from them for the weekend, whatever it might be, so.
Thanks. I would comment that I think this was very positive suggestions. Bangor State Fair has always been very important to me. Where I went on the first date with my wife, it was great, but it was a long time ago. And what happened from a long time ago until now was a very significant degradation of the fair. I think it's that said, it went from fair to carnival. And. If these things weren't in progress or under discussion or has prospects for the future. I would be disinclined to continue with. Because I think it has gotten such a poor representation of the community. I think you're on track to make it better. And you can get some time to do that. But if we don't achieve some of these things, it's not worthwhile just holding a glorified carnival and and putting in the amount of effort. I would comment on the effort just a little bit. I think you mentioned it, but I would. Emphasize what I'm, one of my takeaways is that it is imperative that you take control. Of everything. You know, so this is our fair and we're in charge and everybody else does what we want them to do. Rather than them telling us what they want. And if I think that's, you know, just critical to being able to be successful. I, so, and I'm confident that you can take back control. But if we don't, we're not going to have these results. We'll make counsel out of back you up and taking whatever control you need to. I would mention one thing that is uh just kind of for discussion between. You, the council and Hollywood casinos is one of the things we identified while talking with them. Is that the oval inside the racetrack is currently significantly underutilized. It used to be utilized for recreational purposes. There were baseball fields, there were tennis courts, there were portions. There were a lot of things that happened there. And it could be better utilized again. We could probably put five soccer fields in the infield or baseball field or a couple of soccer fields. But that would mitigate against parking. Uh, depending on how that was set up. So an investment in improving the recreational quality of that space. Would not go along with tearing it up with a lot of parking. So it's just a issue for discussion because I don't think. To me, I would rather have year round recreational space than seven days worth of parking. But. I think that's just a point for consideration and some subsequent.
We think you can use the space not only for parking but for festivals. And so that's the conversation we've been having is to do all their events and, you know, on the grass there, you know, outside of the fair.
There's, I think there's a tremendous potential there, which is underdeveloped.
Yep.
And I'd I'd like to see it. Come back.
Do you think with this new format that Fiesta would consider coming back?
I think they would consider, yes. I I think the challenge will always have, um. Really with anybody is trucking fees. So the biggest reason why they got out of. Awesome, they're not with Skowhegan anymore is trucking up here. For four days, just to move it there for ten days and then they're out of the state. So, um. And they can, they can make more money on a four day carnival or a fair where they're located in Hampshire, Massachusetts. But I think more days, it certainly gives us the ability to push for for better in terms of a midway provider and what we can. Request from them, what they can offer to us. Um, one of the things we run into is looking at our. Uh, ride setup, we had less rides in Skowhegan and it's the same midway provider. And the reason being is. People for them to truck it forty five minutes less plus backtracking, so. I think that's part of our conversations is working with our folks, asking what they can offer for a setup like this and actually making a reasonable decision. Based off of that instead of what's always been available to us.
And you have that new one that you're moving.
Yeah.
The thing about Fiesta was when they came in, the quality of their rides, the appearance of their rides, everything was shiny. They had a lot of new rides that they would bring in. And yes, it did cost them money. And yes, it did cost them money that they brought out. And then as numbers went down. It made it tough for them to justify coming here. So. But they liked that.
Other questions, comments? I was just gonna say, I really like the direction you're taking the fair. Um, I think that needs to happen. So good luck and. For your figure of. And thank you very much for the annual report. That was very enlightening. Um. Looks like things are on the. Yeah, nice. Yeah. That's great. And there was a nice event yesterday, uh, a nice little turnout. Um, so that was real good. Ten years down, another ten years to go. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, um, American Rescue Plan.
I'm gonna say I feel very out of sorts sitting on the side. We can move on now. Again, I think I have to. I want to waste that. So um, I just wanted to, there were, had been a number of items. Um, that the council had suggested that we look, that we suggest we could look at using um an alternate funding. Uh, so the Bangor Area Homeless Shelter had two um applications, one for diversion, one for warming center. Um, our. Community Development Officers looked at that, both of those will qualify from funding under C D B G. Uh, Bangor Halfway House, the facility improvement, the cabinets, again, um. Training Development Officer, like that, these are something we can accomplish here. Uh, the Together Place Peer Run Recovery. Uh, they also had about fifty three thousand dollars worth of um facility improvements, a lot of them accessibility type issues. Again, those will qualify for C D B G funding. Um, and that C D B G officer is actually working at these recipients. I just wanted to close the loop on that. I did include in here the update on the funding. Um, obviously, we have a, I believe, six applications or seven applications that we have yet to finalize. But the numbers that have been requested are still reflected in here. Um, so uh, to date, we've awarded uh twelve point seven million dollars worth of funding. Um, we are still looking at eight million dollars in the applications, which, you know, gives us sort of about a hundred and twenty two thousand. Um, of funds that would be available for the council to consider doing something else with at some other point in time. So. I think we've been wholly focused on trying to get through the applications we have before we go back and revisit what our next steps may be. Because frankly, until we get through the applications, it may dictate what we do have. So, update on fire items. Uh, Together Place Housing. Um, the original application had come in to acquire and renovate a multi-unit building. Um, the original um request was that it be um through Together Place Housing Inc., which was a taxable entity. Um, the board has confirmed that they would like to update the applicant name from Together Place Housing Inc. to Friends of Together Place, a nonprofit. But for clarity, what happens is is the nonprofit acquires the property. And then they hold title to the land. And they immediately transfer the building over to the for-profit entity. And then they lease the land under it back to the for-profit for a period of about ninety nine years. So there had been some concerns before about for-profit entities. So I think we could probably look at some similar deed issues. And allow that. We sort of crossed that hurdle with another taxable entity. So I didn't know if there was any talk about that.
Yeah, the for-profit entity is trying to be operating.
Yes, and they will own it. The for-profit will acquire it. And then the for, I'm sorry, the nonprofit acquires it. And then they transfer building to the for-profit entity, who then acts as a co-op. So the building itself would be in the name of the for-profit entity after the initial acquisition. The land remains in the name of the nonprofit with a long-term lease attached to it.
So we're waiting for that to come?
Nope, that's the new information.
Okay.
Originally, it was a directly to the nonprofit.
Yeah.
And then I got a further clarification just before I walked in the meeting about how. The building is acquired by the nonprofit and then transferred for the, to the for-profit. But I think we've crossed that hurdle for how to address for-profit concerns.
Of things comments. Where do you want to go?
So are we at the point of making a motion? On some.
You can, yeah.
I would, I would move passage. I've been supporting this. Project info.
There's some noise around.
Three seven, three hundred and seventy five thousand.
We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, questions, comments?
I just have a question, please. So this is a full, uh, voting for full amounts, right?
So my question is, is there an acquisition cost of this? Or is it just, are we talking just renovation?
So the the act was. Part of this will go towards acqui- acquisition and renovation. And the two entities, both the nonprofit and the for-profit, will be putting funds towards completing the project as well. They've each got the ability to con- contribute up to a sixty nine thousand dollars to help make this project come to fruition.
But it's not an acquisition of a, of a property or a building here.
It could be, yes. That's what they're gonna look for, yes. I think they would rather look for a, an existing building. Multi-unit, acquire it, renovate it, meet their needs.
All right, I was just confused.
Nope, sorry.
They already have one.
And.
I was thinking that.
They all, they operate company, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But this proposal is not based on identified property. This is give us the money so we can go shopping.
Yes.
Okay.
In Bangor.
Yeah, right. Um, I I would, I'm uncomfortable with that level of specificity of just saying. Gee, give us the money and we're gonna go and find some building somewhere that we can renovate and operate. Uh, that's seems very open.
Enter Yakabaga.
Can we request maybe to be conditional uh to the, to come back to us when they decide on the place? Or the building?
So I, I would not envision us issuing a stack until they have identified a location.
Sure.
Um, and certainly we could have a comeback and have a discussion when they got a full plan.
I mean, in the other direction, we could give it time on this, you know, like nine, the end of the year, ninety days or something like that. If they don't find a location. In a certain amount of time. We'll do something else with it. It is the end of the year, it's not reasonable.
Uh.
So the funds, the funds need to be committed by December thirty first of twenty twenty four and expended by December thirty first of twenty twenty six.
Council David.
Thank you. Um, I I mean, I I support doing the fully funding tonight. Um. I I understand sort of what Council Trumbull is saying with the time limit, but just given. The market and what's available and all those things, I wouldn't feel comfortable putting that restriction on it. Um, and just to go back to what Debbie had brought up. Early on about looking at doing sort of the same kind of contractor. Work with them that we're looking at with other for-profits, I would support that as well.
Okay, Yakabaga.
Um, I thought what would be, what would be a ca- um, reasonable timeframe to, to allow them to, to look for a property? This is what, like. Is it, is it so hard that it's gonna take that long or it can be done within a short frame of time?
Me, I think that's a question of what's sitting on the market today and what could be on the market tomorrow and what could be on the market in months.
As far as I'm concerned, I, if we give them a year to book for something, which this, we would still have. October, November, December in order. To commit it for a different purpose. So I, you know, is is a year enough or is it too much? Nine months? Just throwing it out.
You want me to amend my?
Or can we just, yeah.
We have to. I think, I think a year would be.
The question of. Council David.
Thanks. I guess I'm wondering what the full goal of setting a time limit is, as in like. Are we afraid they're just gonna sit on the money and not find something? I mean, I think that's their, their goal and I can't imagine them necessarily dragging. Their feet. I mean, if the majority supports a time limit, like, but I just, I don't fully understand why, why that we're concerned about that.
I, I guess I was kind of thinking, I do want to put a time limit on it just because. Um, if they don't find a place, I don't want us. Losing out on the opportunity to give that to another organization or another. Entity or something the city may or may not want to be using that money for. So I, that's why I was kind of preferring to put a time limit on it because if they can't find something. I want to be able to make sure that we have enough time to allocate it out. Council Trumbull.
I agree with it. I think everything we funded is either been a specific project or they've had something they're gonna spend it on. I think this is unique where they. They gotta go find a property. So I think maybe three months is too short, but a year is definitely enough time. And then, like you said, if not, we've got to have these. Funds encumbered by the end of, you know, twenty twenty four. So I think this is very reasonable, put it here. I I don't think it's gonna be an issue. I think they'll find something within the next four or five months, but just in the event they don't, we can. We'll have access to them, right?
Mm-hmm. Amen. I I would amend my motion to say that we've been funding this in the full amount of three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And that they have a year to find a property for us to release the funds. And with similar provisions as other non. And with similar provisions as other for nonprofit, for profits.
Previous second stands for the.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments? If not, as usual, we'll do a roll call vote. Council Palateer?
Yes.
Council Sprague?
No.
Council Trumbull?
Yes.
Council Schaefer?
Yes.
Council Halls?
Yes.
Council Yakabaga?
Yes.
Council Davit?
Yes.
I will be a yes as well. Thank you. Saint Andre's Home.
Saint, Saint Andre's Home. Um, so it really wasn't clear in their initial, just a reminder. They'd requested fifty thousand dollars on personnel costs to support their courage lives. Work. Um, it wasn't clear from the budget that they submitted what the intent was. Um, so we did provide that background information. Uh, they provide community-based enhanced behavioral health care and related support service for anyone impacted by human trafficking. Exploitation and domestic and sexual violence. Um, their um fifty thousand dollar request for one-time funds through the City of Bangor. Support the following of their program. They are looking to hire a full-time mental health clinician to serve at least fifty people annually. As well as a full-time case manager, uh, deliver at least twenty educational groups to the community over the next year. And expand uh their empowerment pantry. They didn't have an update on other fundraising requests or in process. To date, they have secured the hundred and sixty thousand dollars of additional funds from other grantors. Um, that they had anticipated in um their initial application. Um, and I think what we were looking at is when we were looking at their financial information. Uh, their expenses are always greater than their revenues for an entity as a whole outside. And most of the, a lot of their work is in this for courage live area. Um, they do have a relationship um with the, I'm not gonna get the acronym right, so I'm just gonna call it the. S C I M Foundation. It's committed to supporting the work of Saint Andre Home and its flagship program of Courage Lives. The foundation covers any gaps in funding. Uh, in addition, many of the services provided by the two new physicians will be able to build through insurance as far as it relates to sustainability. The financial statements do state the operations are non-sectarian, but they do operate in the direct, general direction of a religious order. Um, the question was, how does that impact your day-to-day operations? Uh, Saint Andre's Home is a private nonprofit organization started by the Good Shepherd Sisters. Uh, to meet the needs of vulnerable women and children in Maine. Um, their work does inform their mission. Now, while their dedication to promoting human dignity is part of all that we do, the Good Shepherd Sisters are not directly involved in the day-to-day operation of Courage Lives. Um, encourage lives count, uh, clients uh receive services regardless of nationality, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or ability to. My, my question is really a numbers one and how fifty thousand dollars is gonna support? All four of those goals because so they raised the other hundred and sixty. This is like a one, this is like a twenty five percent request to get it off the ground in the first year. They have raised the balance of the funds to fund. The work. And the, and the sustainability portion comes in as they anticipate they're gonna be able to bill insurance for some of the services that they provide. And that wasn't wholly clear in that first application that we got. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
On this one, I mean, having that information, because I, because you're looking at one through four, I was thinking even. Fifty thousand dollars and so kind of similar we did for uh Eastern Area Agency on aging with providing meals. So. You know, I am not supportive of like operating costs, but if it's a startup cost that they can see, you know, sustainability and. Be able to keep it going after our chunk, I would support this. Um, and and.
Send a motion.
I would move that we fully fund this fifty thousand dollars.
Second. I'll sit. Yeah, a second. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, uh, we do a roll call vote. Council Palateer?
Yes.
Council Sprague?
Yes.
Council Trumbull?
Yeah.
Council Schaefer?
Yes.
Council Halls?
Yes.
Council Yakabaga?
Yes.
Council Davit?
Yes.
I will be a yes as well. I will pass unanimously.
All right.
We go. Next up, uh, Penquess Cap.
Yes, um, so um, just to refresh folks' memory. Um, this is a request for one point five million dollars for the acquisition and construction of Small Development Center. Which would consolidate, it says four locations, but it's likely three locations because it's likely they would continue to maintain their site at Eastern Main Community College. Uh, there was a concern raised that the project adds only eighteen childcare slots. Um, in the response from Penquess is that uh this allows um Penquess to actually retain, you know, three million dollars of federal funding for the project. If they are unable to bring uh funding for this project, three million will have to be returned to the office of Head Start. And the opportunity to provide an early child. It's early education and childcare hub for Bangor will be lost. Um, ARPA will help preserve existing slots um while also adding the notice. Um, this um service of facility would also does not only Head Start, three to five-year-old, but early Head Start, six weeks to three years old. Head Starts have been funded, flat-funded for years, increasing cost staffing um have forced um cuts to the number of slots that they operate. Once slots are removed from our award, we're unable to get them back. Um, the funding from Head Start is meant to cover staffing, building costs, and administrative supplies. Uh, they currently lease most of their locations, all of their Bangor locations anyway. Their largest one serving eighty children is on Davis Road. It was a lease from Bangor Housing Authority. It started, it was for decades, very uh low at six thousand dollars a year. It has now increased to nearly eighty eight thousand dollars a year. It's an increase that they cannot sustain. Um. For our housing authority, they are seeing the same kinds of increase again. Um, they relate to the fact that Head Start program is flat funding. Um, Venture Way is kind of a challenge that the bus can't get up there. It requires childrens to walk up and the hill. On safe weather conditions, they have uh experienced occasional break-ins. Um, they also um have had to rest security systems. Obviously, they have to make sure that they are clearing the grounds, bearing needles and drug paraphernalia throughout. Or um children are let out. The three Eastern Main uh. Community college uh are not designated just for students. It's their affiliation with the schools to serve as a labs. Whether their students need teaching experience. Um, available, for many years available, uh, private pay childcare slots. At that location have been filled by the children of hospital staff. Um, it was discussed whether or not they could raise fee. They actually can't uh because they participate in the state's childcare subsidy program. That assists low to moderate income families. Um, as a participant, they cannot charge more than the market rate is determined by state survey um of providers. The last survey was completed in twenty twenty one. Um, or let's say Penquess can charge no more than two fifty five a week for infants, two thirty a week for toddlers, and two oh five a week for preschoolers. Um, Head Start funding comes with, helps offset the cost. Does come with stringent guidelines to ensure high quality um early childhood education. Other teachers have to have bachelor's degree and those working with infants and toddlers must, of course, work focused on that age group. Um, talks about the additional services, the development, health screening and foods um that are provided to children in Head Start. Uh, they're, as it required to follow evidence-based curriculum. Um. They actually went to the, to, we talked about could Venture Way be a private childcare if Penquess vacated that building? Uh, they actually took some time to consider that, the viability of remaining at that location. And offering infant and toddler care separate from Head Start. They could maintain many of the practices that contribute to high quality, but they wouldn't be uh, wouldn't. They could maintain many of the practices that contribute to high quality, but they wouldn't be, uh, would not be obligated to that Head Start. Or the main subsidy program. Uh, licensing allows eight infants and toddlers per class, with minimum staffing would dictate two staff per, for eight babies. Pankuis would actually run use three. Um, revenue using a similar rate to a nearby child, child care center where infant and toddler is four fifty a week. Um, times eight children for fifty-two, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of revenue versus their staffing expenses. Which was about two twenty-six. Uh, the question is too, as schools transition a full predate, pre, full day pre-K. Um, and what that impact would have, pre-K, uh, programs is serves eligible four-year-olds. Families with three-year-olds still require care and education. Our current work list for Bangor families is twenty-eight Head Start and forty-four Early Head Start. Um, how many students aren't enrolled in their choice location? They make every effort, um, to enroll children in the center that parents prefer, but it finds a turnable to accommodate that request. Um, we have an opening for a pre, preschool child at one location, but no room for the sibling that requires infant and toddler. There are typically a few families in this situation each year with the new building, we would be able to keep siblings at the same location. Minimizing transportation and times for certain families. Uh. Transportation barrier for individuals. Uh, they shared that they had three families that walked their children to the Davis Road location. Most families have transportation or access to transportation. To bring their children to the centers, last year, twenty-two of the eighty children, um, served at the Davis Road, uh, location that is in Cape Heart. Looking ahead, there is the potential, though, of separate funding to consider busing to a central, um, center location. Has not been viable in the past due to scattered, uh, childcare sites. Um, they have provided a pro forma, um, that includes sort of the operating, uh, revenue projections and operating costs. For a new facility. I do believe it anticipates, um. The, um, total funding from the ARPA allocation, because it still represents a balanced budget. Um, they also had stated that if they are, um, successful, that the Office of Head Start would mandate that we. They convene a policy council with parent and caregiver representation for each of their, um, own childhood locations. Group is responsible for considering improving both our grant and any substantial changes in programming locations. Which would be required as part of any potential consolidation. And, um, without the city's ARPA funding, um, they state that they will be forced to cut slots in order to cover increasing expenses.
Questions? Comments? Counselor Schaefer?
Um, a lot of this information, it really helps clarify things, especially seeing that early Head Start can be used for infant and toddler care as well, and. It's not just necessarily sixteen preschoolers seeing the, um, lease rates. Was really eye-opening, and then also even the part of saying, what if they ran a commercial daycare out of the existing place? I mean, it's not news to me, but it might be news to other people who are not familiar with how even regu, you know, regular private. Plain old daycare works, and that your revenue will never meet your expenses, especially when you're talking about infant care, so, um. Just, there's a lot, there's been a lot of discussion with that just in the, in the last couple of weeks. Um, so, having this information. Uh, is very helpful, and it sounds like if they had their own facility, it would. Save them at least a hundred thousand dollars a year in, in leases, um. And if they ever left it, a childcare center would have, there'd be a need for it. So I am now inclined to support this.
Counselor Turnbull?
What, what's up, Ms.? Where is this located?
I, I, I believe that the site they're looking at is, um, adjacent to. Um, the.
Okay, yeah, I guess we did talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, I think this is a good project. I just not sure at full funding, I mean, when you look at what we, we've done some other funding for. Uh, childcare or childish stuff, when you look at, uh, hey, I think we allocated two million for the Y. And that two million dollars, you look at the Y funding, that was a lot more in childcare, covers some child, early childhood. Probably up to the oldest people in the community, and had much, I think, a much bigger impact for two million dollars. When you look at this for one point five, it's very helpful, but I'm not sure. It equates, I mean, I think you should look at what we funded in the past, and I, I could see maybe get a five hundred thousand or so, but. One point five seems like an awful lot for, when you look at other things funded like this.
Counselor Palatier?
Thank you. I think it's worth noting that the total budget for the Y is in the ballpark for fifty million dollars. The total budget for this project, I think, is four and a half, so.
Right, so we percentage-wise, that's what I'm saying, percentage-wise, it's a lot higher on this one than the other ones.
Counselor Yakabaga?
I think while I agree with Counselor Turnbull's point, I also, when I think about what will happen if we don't fully fund this project. I feel the consequences of not fully funding it, the impact on struggling families. Especially, I mean, talking about Head Start, the number of people on the waiting list for. Uh, pre-K or like babies, uh, I think that the impact will be really. Rough. But I, I hear you, Counselor Turnbull. That's exactly what went through my mind as I was reading the numbers. Uh, it's, it's a tough one to decide on, like, full, um. Uh, supporting this full or partial. I feel partial will be, will affect the, the outcome. It's a tough one here.
Counselor Sprague? Wearing this additional information is very helpful. It does seem to me that we're being positioned. That if we don't fund this, it means that Head Start program and Bangor is gonna fall apart. That they won't have a facility, they won't be able to manage their expenses, they won't be able to continue their operations, they'll be, have to cut. Uh, the services that they provide. And I, I may be misinterpreting that, but. It, it doesn't feel good that we're being positioned so in saying, well, if you don't give us the ARPA funds. Uh, this whole venture, and thus the Head Start program's going to be at serious jeopardy. I don't, I believe that there is some risk, but I don't believe it falls apart based on our funding. Um, the. So that, that doesn't strike me quite right. Uh, I'm also interested in what Bangor Housing's position is on this proposal. Uh, given that many of the kids that are, uh, needing Head Start services are located. In Bangor Housing facilities. Uh, and it seems that they've, uh, in the past, they kind of approached that they. You know, care deeply about the welfare of the people who live in their facilities, and supporting the boys and girls clubs and a variety of other programs. And in this case, it, uh, seems that, um, they have, uh, increased the lease. Cost, some to a extent that it puts the program at risk. And I'm interested in why that has occurred. And what Bangor Housing feels is an appropriate alternative. To providing long-term sustainability for the Head Start program, other than the city just underwriting it with ARPA funds. So I am, I, I don't have a good feel for this yet. Um, although I believe that this would. Considerable merit in maintaining the Head Start program. I think it's essential to the community. But I don't think we've got a full package of facts and alternatives before us.
Thank you. Counselor Davit?
Um, thank you. Um, I'm actually, well, I'll make my comment first, but, um, just to Counselor Sprague's last point, I mean. Um, seeing as Bangor Housing is their landlord, I'm sure that they're gonna have feelings about it that may vary from what. Not to say what would be best, but, um, they're the, they're the ones who'd be losing out on movies, so I'm sure that that comes with its own perspective. Um, but. I won't go down into all the, the reasons, but, um, I, I think this is an incredibly worthy project, um. And this is the kind of thing that when we've talked over time, in all the years we were talking about spending this money was. How do we invest in really big projects that are gonna be here for a long time? This is one of those, um, that has an immediate impact as soon as that can start building, the cost things that Counselor Schaefer spoke about, so, um, I would move. That we fully fund, um, the pink was asked.
Any other comments?
Just wanted to follow up with Counselor Sprague's comments. I, I agree, I mean, I feel like. But for full funding this, Head Start's gonna disappear in Bangor is, is not accurate at all. Head Start's been in Bangor since then for fifty-five years. It was one of the first programs that cap agencies did. It was part of Lyndon Johnson's Great Society Plan. It's just, Head Start's not gonna go away if we don't fully fund this request, so. That's just ridiculous, a concept to even consider, so. That's all. I, I support this, but one, I want one five, five million.
I think all this updated information has been very helpful to me, um. I, uh, I'm not in support of full funding this. In my mind, I, I was looking at maybe seven fifty, at a cap of maybe up to a million. Um, but. Um, I'm not comfortable with the, that full, full amount. Where do you wanna go? Uh, Counselor Schaefer?
I believe Counselor Davit made a mo, motion to authorize full funding.
My, my question is, ha, have we, other agencies, we've asked. What could you do with partial funding? Is partial funding, in kind of we talked about, will it happen with or without it? So have we gotten that answer from them? I didn't see it in the notes.
Think we did. Looking, there's a lot of information.
I just saw the, um. The, the seven percent borrowing rate, um, over ten years. Um, and that puts, that was what's in their budget. I don't know what the, what that figure, what they're borrowing at.
So they were, they're contributing, so the overall project budget is about seven point five million dollars. There's three million something from remaining in our Head Start grant that they anticipate. Uh, they are using, I believe it was one point five million of their own funds. And they were borrowing through a commercial loan, one point five million. Believe the overall project budget is somewhere in the neighborhood of seven point five million.
Counselor Yakabaga?
I mean, if, if it gets, uh. Maybe partially funding this project to be approved, I would go with that, but I would not go with less than a million. To, to be effective, I feel like seven fifty, it would not do much.
Okay, I know there was a, there was a motion before we funded. I have not heard a second.
I, I made a second.
Oh, you made a second, sorry, I didn't hear. We have a motion, we have a second. Counselor Turnbull?
I was gonna amend the motion to, uh, fund it at one million dollars.
You have a second?
Do we wanna wait to hear back from them if, like, if it's partially funded, what, uh, what, what will be affected by this?
I, I asked the question, would the project move forward without or with a partial ARPA funding? Without ARPA funding, the private debt would need to be added, making the project cost prohibitive. The city ARPA dollars are essential, and they will assist and leverage their federal dollars. And fill the gap, and the pending allocation of federal allocation of, um. Head Start funds, which requires a twenty percent local match, that they've ma, which they, they make anyway. With their own equity contribution.
Counselor Trump, uh, Counselor.
We have previously had some discussions, although I'm, I'm lacking clarity on the results. Of, uh, offering some money as low-interest loans. Uh, that can be paid back. And if that was a, a use, potential use of the ARPA funds. I'd consider that as an alternative and offering. Um, maybe a greater loan capacity to be paid back, but at a lower interest rate than the seven percent that they're anticipating.
I believe the ability to do a revolve, the only time we've had the conversation about our revolving loan fund. Was specifically related to housing. And, um, the eligible activities that you can undertake as it relates to housing. Continue to broaden under the federal requirements. I have not looked to see if. Our revolving loan is an eligible use that isn't for housing.
Just, it would seem to me in this particular case that. The organization has borrowed capacity and had a lower interest rate. It would be possible to borrow the money and to, um, offer. And to meet their objectives in terms of the cost of the program. And if they could do that, I'd be inclined to think about something like that. Uh, without the additional information such as, you know, where things stand with Bangor Housing. And I'm left with a feeling that, you know, still left with a feeling that we're being positioned to, you know, if you don't do this, this fails. But I don't believe that that's strictly the case.
Counselor Turnbull?
Uh, you just practical point. We looked at another project, we've said, can we use other funding like CDVG? These are obviously low-income individuals for, uh, Head Start. Can we use CDPG money for parents?
So what we're doing is we're rapidly going through.
Oh, yeah.
What you have for, uh, for access to CDVG money. And there's still a couple of others. There may be opportunities, but I, I think we're getting to the point where you may wanna consider what you wanna do for housing. Additional housing opportunities, sort of, versus others.
Counselor Schaefer?
Uh, you know, childcare was one of our goals. It still is a goal. It is. This is a capital project in securing a building, um. If, and it, you know. I think Bangor Housing has said what they think about this project, and they don't want Head Start there anymore, else they wouldn't have increased their rent. Eighty-two thousand dollars in less than ten years, um, so they don't want them there. And seeing that only twenty-two students, uh, are in Cape Heart that go to Davis Road, and only three walk there. Hopefully, they can figure out transportation to get to New Center, which was a huge concern of mine in our additional conversation. Uh, I think that we need to find a way to fully fund this, whether it's through a combination of. Of our development loan projects, uh, CDVG, ARPA. But at some point, we need to find a way to fully fund this, because if it's gone up to eighty-eight thousand in the last year. Then Nectar's gonna be a hundred and eight thousand, and there's gonna be a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and then we're gonna not have childcare for. And if you read any of the stories about what's happened with the childcare center in Caribou. There are peop, there are people, mostly women, who are now saying, I can't take that job promotion because the childcare closed. And what am I gonna do because I'm in Caribou with no childcare? I don't want that to be the story in Bangor. Um, early childhood education has a profound impact on future drug abuse, future, you know, uh. Domestic violence, it prevent, it's preventative in that way, education attainment, all of those things, so. We can sit here very comfortably, I managed to get my kids through daycare, and cost more than my mortgage. Literally, every month, cost more than my mortgage, um, and I managed to do it. I'm very glad that I could, but I also know that it would have been devastating to my own personal career, my own personal. Future goals if I had not been able to afford childcare. This is. About children, but it's also about families, it's about so much more, so we need, I think, if, if it's not gonna happen without us, and we need to figure out a way to make. Put together one and a half million, whether it's a check from the ARPA funds, whether it's a check from the ARPA funds. And some sort of low-income, uh, development loan, whatever, but I think we need to find a way to make this happen.
Do you know other comments? The motion on the table is to fully fund this. Uh, we'll do a roll call.
Actually, sorry, was Dan's motion to amend seconded?
No.
No.
Oh, okay, so it failed?
Also, we, we have to vote on the motion on the floor before we could vote on anything else, so.
Right.
No, you can't, well, I mean, if it was an amendment, you have to go on that.
Right.
But there wasn't.
All right. Roll call vote. Counselor Palatier?
Yes.
Counselor Sprague?
No.
Counselor Turnbull?
No.
Counselor Schaefer?
Yes.
Counselor Halls?
Yes.
Counselor Yakabaga?
Yes.
Counselor Davit?
Yes.
That will be a no. All right. Bangor Children's Home. Did we get an update?
Um, no, that's on me. Other things came up today.
Can only imagine. So, we'll move on to food and medicine?
Yes.
Alright.
Yep. Um, so food and medicine. Um, it was funding request for two hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-two to hire a peer workforce navigator. Retarded working Bangor for a three-year period. Um, we talked about the fact that the term navigator is widely used and can describe the work undertaken by a physician, you know. By multiple physicians, so, um, they provided some additional background. Um, they currently have an individual, um, because they are serving as a subrecipient of state and federal funds. And they have one peer workforce navigator that provides services to residents that covers seven counties. The physician was to, uh, came forward initially to approve the resilient. The position was to uh came forward initially to approve the resiliency rate with the unemployment benefit system. And to guide workers to new jobs, education and other resources. Um oftentimes, the navigator is connected with an individual for one barrier, but is able to identify other opportunities as well. Um they had provided some information during the first quarter of calendar twenty twenty three, what the existing navigator did. Um she had supported eighty nine individuals. Forty seven percent were referred to connect to public benefits, thirty seven percent increased income supports. Uh thirty three percent increased food securities, thirty one percent were referred to unemployment. Thirty one percent signed these wages, twenty five percent obtained new employment. Sixteen percent received their unemployment benefits, ten percent received healthcare, eight percent enrolled in education uh and training. And four percent gained access to transportation. Uh the existing grant and that our funding is current position began July one of twenty twenty two. And the funding is in place through June thirtieth of twenty twenty three. I did ask them to provide a budget. I think if you may recall, the budget included. Their existing state program and it was multi years, so it wasn't really clear um what it all incorporated. Um so we did break down um the total budget. In um your pocket. And I'm looking because I know there was some clarification that came in afterwards. Um so under salaries and benefits, the way we referenced that it includes um supervisory. Um and they shared that this would be additional staff that they would have to hire on top of the navigator position. Um I also asked um. This would contribute to the new, same thing for the benefits. Um all other. So it appears to me that the fourteen. Fourteen thousand four twenty six under rent and utilities uh may be indirect cost. Um original budget, so with some folks more on vacation and some folks wore out some or some other things. Um so but about um sixteen thousand also seems to include supervisory. I do think that um the council wants to consider whether or not you, we really have not done indirect costs. Um indirect costs are certainly an eligible use under federal grants, but we have stayed far away from that. And I know Combs Scott County has embraced that and offered that up to every participant, but we don't think. The council has done that to this date. So I think we'd need some clarification on what exactly, but it appears that it is one person. And he's and part of another person as it relates to supervisor as well as some indirect costs. Uh they have made um some funding solutions, but not to actually fund this position, but to actually augment their ability to deliver for effective results. Uh they see this effort as initially cost intensive, then decreasing over time. The additional costs beyond the ARPA request are related to uh developing deep partnerships with organizations in Bangor, developing volunteer leaders within fam. And integrating this uh program with other fam initiatives, including education around group causes and social farming. And I think there was around uh around fifty thousand or so that has been raised thus far or identified as a potential to be raised. Um the sustainability plan appeared to be twofold. Um if this starts, then there's an opportunity to apply to future state and federal under opportunities. Um and to train, not trail, individuals with an existing agency side with uh assist. Um did share that most agencies cited inability to firm all their current responsibilities. So. You know, with the creation of a protocol accompanying matters um that is publicly available, because sustainable. Uh they believe the best way to secure future funding is to demonstrate effectiveness in terms of its outcomes. The work could be done in conjunction with current state and federal programs, and they believe their members should merit funding. It's about building programs for other organization, which includes training staff members and volunteers. It's also a built building uh network capacity with their partners. Um we plan to develop a training program or protocol. Partner organizations have various missions and success brings capacity. Um the application states funding would allow for additional outreach assessed at persistence. If partial funding were awarded, please just please describe what the program might entail. Uh they shared that they would do uh the best they can. We believe this needs to take time and skill to develop effective training programs. Good organizations and individuals to participate in the programs along with the organizational skills to develop the network.
Questions, comments? Councilor Yakabaga?
So is this for Bangor or for other counties?
This was for Bang- the request for was for Bangor specific outreach. Yeah, they have one position that basically works with individuals across seven counties.
Uh yeah, because that's and I want to make sure that it's just for the Bangor area. Um so I'm aware that the career center does similar uh activities, I feel, working. So how how are we going to avoid duplicating efforts here?
So I'm gonna say I think that what uh food and medicine is looking at is. Being out and proactively working with individuals and finding opportunities to connect to other services and resources. I believe if you go to the community center, you have to initiate that engagement. Um and they're prepared to answer that question about your. Particular benefit claim or or job application.
Thank you.
Counselor Trumbull?
I just got a more to fully fund this request.
With or without indirect?
Uh without.
Clear second?
Second.
Okay, Counselor Frank.
Still left with the impression on this that this is for a lot of operational funding. There's some development built into this, but it's basically operational. And I find no credible evidence that it can be sustained. Uh other than saying that we'll do a good job unless people will want to sustain this. And provide ongoing funding, which I don't think is at all reliable. And then the response that the to can you do anything with partial funding, like? Could you do, you know, with one person and half the funding? The response that we'll do the best we can, I think, is insufficient and inadequately addresses. Uh what could be done uh if we were to partially fund this. So I'm not in favor of fully funding it. At this amount, given those limitations, from what I think we have seen so far.
Any comments? Counselor Yakabaga?
I kind of disagree sometimes with Counselors Brigg on operational costs specifically, because. We always find that uh certain nonprofits have proved that even. Even if they rely on a grant, they still they do with a good job they do in the community, they are always able to. To keep grants coming and to maintain their operations. So I'm I'm not too worried in that regard.
How much was the indirect?
I think it's somewhere between. It isn't wholly clear. It's somewhere between fourteen, sixteen, or maybe it's in there twice at thirty where. We have some folks on vacation, so we're trying to swing through that.
Yep.
One of the clarity as well. Being no other comments, uh. Another roll call vote, Counselor Palteer?
Yes.
Counselor Sprague?
No.
Counselor Trumbull?
Yes.
Counselor Schaefer?
Yes.
Counselor Hodge?
Yes.
Counselor Yakabaga?
Yes.
Counselor David?
Yes.
This is a hard one. Um I'm sorry, I should make make in a comment. No. And I apologize, I'm just struggling with this because so much of this is operating and um. Uh next up. United Way.
Uh, United Way. So thank you for the reminder. I'm just gonna throw it out there that I do sit on the board of the United Way. Um they have requested a funding of eight hundred thousand dollars for the creation of community, a hub. A nonprofit hub to fill important gaps in the nonprofit sector. Um it is working to increase capacity and infrastructure of multiple organizations. Uh the feedback, the additional questions were, has the congressionally directed spending uh request advanced? Uh it was not included in the in the community appropriations bill, however, it was well received and they will apply again in twenty five. Are of the other funds being sought or committed to date restricted for a particular purpose, i.e. operator and capital? Now, um the budget submitted with the application appears to include both operating and capital. Please provide additional information regarding the budget. Some submitted. Uh they did provide a revised budget based uh due to the failure at CDS to delineate. Uh to advance, which delineates capital and startup, which encompasses a two year period. So I broke it out that the capital costs are one point eight million dollars. Uh the startup operating cost for a period of two years is um just over nine hundred thousand. Um they have fundraising of two fifty. They've asked the city for eight hundred. They think they intend to ask the county for eight hundred. They've got private nonprofit funding and project fees and sponsorships. To date, they have raised two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of the private funds. At this time, they have not identified potential locations. They still connect with supporters who have many locations. And their desires to remain in Bangor, uh their home since seventeen eighty five years ago. Uh was there preliminary feasibility work undertaken? Um conducting a formal feasibility study was not deemed necessary for several reasons. It's a continuation of their opportunity twenty twenty eight framework and extensive community and professional input. That serves, uh they also have a strong track record of implementing projects in the past, demonstrating the capacity to carry out. Um they have thoroughly researched and analyzed the current needs and challenges. Um and one research, fact finding and needs assessments um were not conducted in a vacuum. The consultant consulted key stakeholders, including representatives of each sector, as well as a diverse set of community members. Um they taking the time for an extensive feasibility study would be a resource intensive and delay our ability to implement this. Um other operating projections demonstrate the sustainability of the initiative. And you can see that they have shown um some fundraising, private nonprofit programs, some um. Support dressed from United Way sponsorships versus the ongoing operating costs, which seem to show um that it would operate. Effectively, provided the money is raised.
Hang on, I'll take a motion. Go back across these comments.
And I guess I know that folks are getting concerned, and if you don't feel you have added their time, I would say that we will work to continue this and re. Committee meeting Monday or Tuesday, because I know that you focused on this. And we want to make sure that you have the time, and I know you're all sitting here thinking you have other items.
I I I still feel like this is sort of amorphous as to what is being offered and what. I still don't quite get it. This isn't as clear to me as as other applications. Um. So that that's why I'm hesitating on it. If there was more defined objectives. I'd understand it more.
Counselor Trumbull?
Yeah, I don't need more time. I mean, I'm sure if we had. No end to the ARPA funds, I might want to talk about this more, but we're dealing with so many people that have needs for homeless or the child early childhood. This seems like it's a nice idea, but I'm not I find this.
Counselor Frank, if we do it through and the council reviewed this, because the United Way couldn't review themselves. Um I found a a lot of merit in what's being proposed. In terms of developing a package of services which could strengthen other nonprofits, could help them do their job better. I'm thinking to myself, gee, for all those projects we didn't fund, maybe it would be great if the United Way could use them as their first clients. And help them out. Um I think that this is a big ask, uh however. And uh I would be inclined to provide some partial funding for the capital cost. But only that partial funding has not the initial funding. But the complementary funding to other funding that had been raised through other sources. The last dollar covered, so to speak, rather than the first dollar. But as it's currently structured, I would feel that the the ask is is too great and is not structured properly. But I'd be willing to defer further discussion on this and come back to it also.
Yes, I think I want to second that.
Is that a motion?
Or even to come back to discuss this, yeah.
Well, I'm sure. I'd move that we defer final discussion of this item. And come back to it and give it a more consideration than we're going to give it.
That's a second. I'm not seeing any objections.
It's all roll call.
What's that?
Is it a motion after our own roll call?
Uh yes, we will. Uh Counselor David?
Sorry, I'm I guess I'm confused on Counselor Sprague's motion. Is it a motion to come back to it after we've allotted everything else? Or I guess what?
We need a motion?
Like next week?
No, I'm moving to back to it at some time later than tonight for finalizing our discussion. Not that we wait until we find out how much is left over.
Does that need a motion? He was just trying to bring it to a close.
Right, just trying to move it along.
Okay, um I would, I mean, yeah, I'll I'll vote to move it forward, but I would say I would I would agree with Counselor Trumbull as far as what we would fund. Um so unless something magical changes between now and next week, I'll I'll end up being a no on this, although I appreciate the work that they do.
We're pushing it out to next week, and we do have to do a roll call vote. Counselor Palteer?
Yes.
Counselor Sprague?
Yes.
Counselor Trumbull?
No.
Counselor Schaefer?
Yes.
Counselor Hodge?
Yes.
Counselor Yakabaga?
Yes.
Counselor David?
No.
That will be a yes. So it's moved out for next week.
Okay.
All right, um I know we have to go into executive sessions. I don't know if we can get to these last two.
I will leave that. I mean, we can certainly reschedule these. Because you do need the time that you need to have the discussion that you want to have, I believe.
I would. I would say let's move this out to next week. Those two items, health equity or heal and webinar.
Need a motion on that or just? With the apologies, I know you all have been waiting for this all night. Can we make can we make them at the top of the agenda? Yeah, at the next meeting?
So I I'll look to try to align the committee meetings next week to see if we can do a workshop session first. Or maybe we can consolidate meetings again, depending on the depending on the length of the agendas.
That would be, yeah, my preference for, yep. These folks waiting here all night.
All right. Good, um. We will do that. Um next up, uh manager updates?
Real quick, warming centers. Uh the RFP, when Dan Brennan was here, he talked about there would be an RFP going out for funding of warming centers that are is going to be released on Friday. Uh the due date will be October thirteenth, so this should provide more opportunity for supportive operations and for individuals to uh to undertake proper planning. We remain on track for the syringe waste contract to roll out uh October first. We'll be working to make sure that all the notifications and that we're all talking the same conversation. And people know how to use this service and what to expect. Um we're approaching the end of the council year, just to make sure that people don't believe we've forgotten. We're going to finalize the ARPA applications, even if we have to move committee meetings around, we're going to identify next steps if any beyond that. Um we're going to come back for a public restroom discussion, a council operating policy. And a discussion of a more balanced approach on housed individuals. And while I was sitting here, I got an email from the city clerk telling me that there's a typo. And it's a big typo. Yes, oh, see, you saw. Thanks for telling us. So uh Counselor Sprague's item, it is for to adopt the zoning changes. Uh in order to come into compliance with LD two thousand and three. It reads, the planning board voted, not uh, split nationality, they voted two passes. Six to one, and yes, that's a big difference, six to one.
Okay.
Yep, and I see your planning board chair is bought, so. That's all I have.
All right.
All right.
I move we go into executive sessions under one MRSA four five sixty labor contract. Executive session on MRSA four five six A personnel matter and another personnel matter.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, we have a second? All right, roll call votes.
Yeah.
Council Palteer, Council Shaffer, Council Sprague?
Yes.
Council Trumbull?
Yes.
Council Shaffer?
Yeah.
Council Hodge?
Yeah.
Council Yakabaga?
Yes.
Council David?
Yes.
I'm doing this with my eyes shut.
Now you're going to do it when you shut your eyes.
That will be your.